Microphones on. I hereby call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united in all. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is the Mayor's State of the City. So I'm going to head to the podium. I'm not leaving, I promise. Peachtree City, it is my pleasure to present the Mayor's State of the City for the fourth time. In 2024, advancements in Peachtree City were driven by our city's vision of uncompromised excellence. It was a year of momentum and progress. It was also a year in which we took time to reflect on how far we've come, to honor our founders, and to celebrate 65 years. And 2025 will bring exciting developments. We're investing in our future and offering tax relief to our citizens. Progress is underway with the largest transportation improvement project in Fayette County history. Promising developments in recreation, public safety, citizen engagement, and so much more are on the horizon, all to help our families and our businesses thrive. First, the budget. In Peachtree City, we balance our budget, invest in our future, and save for a rainy day. The largest percentage of our fiscal year 25 budget, 47%, is for public safety. Our previous strategy of increasing pay and benefits has worked, and we now have a fully-staffed police force and fire department. 10% of our budget goes to recreation. On that point, we have exciting new plans for facilities and programs that our citizens have asked for, and I can't wait to share them with you. And perhaps best of all, we have $35.1 million saved in our rainy day fund. We also offered needed tax relief to our citizens. We lowered the millage rate in fiscal year 25 from 6.043 mills to 5.983 mills. We passed a resolution to increase a property tax exemption for low-income seniors in Peachtree City. What was previously an income threshold of $30,000 per year will be $60,000 per year, meaning that more of our seniors may qualify. And the exemption amount is increased from $5,000 to $30,000, a truly impactful increase. We're proud to support our seniors with these changes. We're opting in to the new property tax exemption law, HB 581, which allows us to cap the increase of property tax assessments for homesteaders, those of us living in our primary residence here. Additionally, in our county-wide discussions on the topic of HB 581, I'm advocating against the proposed new one-penny sales tax called a FLOST or Flexible Local Option Sales Tax. I see the FLOST as problematic for our citizens for a number of reasons, and I'm not interested in adding the penny sales tax that comes with HB 581. We, as citizens, are all having to do more with less these days, and your government should do the same. One of the biggest issues in Peachtree City is traffic, and I'm working hard to make sure we get the traffic solutions we need. The largest transportation improvement project in Fayette County history is underway at the intersection of Highways 54 and 74. This is a Georgia Department of Transportation, or GDOT, project, and it is GDOT-funded. The project includes dedicated right-turn lanes for southbound travelers on 74 wishing to turn right and head west, and, maybe best of all, re-signalization of the entire corridor. It is expected to be completed open to traffic in summer of '26. I fought to secure SPOST funds for upgraded intersection signage, so the final look of the project will be up to Peachtree City standards. A roundabout at Crotown Road and Peachtree Parkway has been approved by council for 100% design, with SPOST funding from both Peachtree City and Fayette County identified to complete the project. In 2025, council and I are prioritizing the final design of a project on Huddleston Road, which includes extending sewer and multi-use path the length of the road, and putting in new stormwater and a new road design as well. We're expanding our network of multi-use paths, most notably on Robinson Road, for better access to Booth Middle School. We used SPOST dollars to landscape the Gateway Bridge area on the west side of town, and we replaced the PATH Bridge over Lake Peachtree to allow for two-way golf cart traffic on that thoroughfare. Good jobs and a strong economy are the backbone of our thriving community. When it comes to economic development, Peachtree City is a standout in the region. Companies, industries expanding in Peachtree City in the last year include SP Meditech, CertainTeed, Ceylon, Gerishimer, Adventure Aviation, and HoshaZaki. The All Movie Hotel, one of six owned by Francis Ford Coppola, is marketing their post-production technology in their location here on Crotown Road worldwide. Vacant storefronts like the former Stein Mart and empty Kmart are now being filled. A local, family-owned clothing store called B. Turners is doing well in the Stein Mart space, and Kmart will soon be home to new indoor pickleball courts. There is also a new freestanding pickleball facility now under construction on the south side. I was honored in March to accept the 2024 Economic Development Award at the South Metro Development Outlook Conference. Industry leaders cite our airport, our skilled and ready workforce, and our quality of life as reasons to move their businesses here, expand their businesses here, and locate their families in Peachtree City. After spending the last decade advocating for a technical college in Fayette County, I am delighted to share that Southern Crescent Technical College and Clayton State University are now here, providing new partnerships to serve our community and new programs to serve our industries. Hundreds of local residents are now enrolled in English as a Second Language, GED, and degree completion programs. Industry offerings include a new aviation program, a critically-needed nursing bridge program, cybersecurity, and technical training. Having these colleges in Peachtree City not only boosts education and the local economy, it also contributes to a vibrant and rich cultural community. Let's talk about recreation. Tonight, we will be, hopefully, adopting a new recreation master plan, our first since 2011. This will have exciting implications for parks and recreation in Peachtree City for decades to come. The new plan features a host of new facilities, from a new free-of-charge splash pad to a cricket field to 24 municipal pickleball courts. We'll be planning upgrades at some of our existing facilities like Battery Way Park and a community gathering space on Kelly Drive, where we're conceptualizing a Veterans Plaza, a children's play space, and Boardwalk connectivity to the Flat Creek Nature Area nearby. And if you or your family use any of our recreation facilities, you've noticed the improvements we've made to ball fields, basketball courts, fencing, bleachers, signage, buildings, and play equipment. Our recreation department took over the day-to-day operations of the tennis center with no reduction in memberships or services. Our tennis center continues to host important regional and national tournaments. We've beautifully remodeled the lower level of the tennis center, and it now serves as office space for our fire department. We upgraded the Field of Hope at the Peachtree City Athletic Complex with a smooth surface turf field, easier access, and new dugouts to better accommodate our disabled players. We are now in the process of establishing a recreation advisory group to provide a strong citizen's voice on all matters of recreation, including programs, fees, priority projects, and long-term plans. I have led the charge to rekindle our relationship with the Southern Conservation Trust, and we're now bringing environmental programming such as hikes, kids' camps, and scheduled activities back to Peachtree City in 2025, starting this month. There's a hike on Saturday. In December, Peachtree City was awarded Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. The same week we received the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA designation, we also received the Georgia Tree Council 2024 Outstanding Community Grand Award for Urban Forestry Excellence. Peachtree City remains one of the safest cities in Georgia. Our police department has maintained the very prestigious Kalia Meritorious Award status. We've seen a 22% decrease in Part I crimes from last year. We've partnered with the Fayette County Board of Education to place a school resource officer in every elementary school in the city. They will be in place by the start of the school year in August. Police Chief Janet Moon and Lieutenant Brad Williams have expanded our law enforcement focus to include investigating cryptocurrency crimes. Through complex investigations, local law enforcement has been able to recover thousands of dollars for victims of online scamming. Even the GBI and the FBI are still coming up to speed on some of these complex technologies. Our focus going forward will be not only on recovering funds, but also public education and prevention. We still have our police canine, a Belgian Malinois named Aimir. And thanks to the SPOST, we've added two more beautiful Belgian Malinois dogs to the police force, Draco and Johnny. We can now cover three shifts of operations with a fourth canine in the plans. And in a very unexpected and exciting development, this year, the Big Shots Gun Range and Restaurant on Highway 74 went up for sale, and Peachtree City promptly purchased it. Now, for about the same amount of money we would have spent to expand our cramped police headquarters building by about 3,000 square feet, we now own 21,000 square feet of gun range, training space, and future offices. Our vision there is to establish not only a public safety training space, but also an emergency operations center and real-time crime center that will serve the entire region for the next 50 to 100 years. Our fire department was awarded ISO Class I status again this year, keeping your insurance rates as low as possible. Our EMTs celebrated two cardiac saves. Our community outreach and fire prevention efforts included continued public events by Josh Teal, our community outreach director, and 6 million views on TikTok. Our Peachtree City Library celebrated its 50th year on October 8th with a coffee bar, crafts, music, and a local author expo on the plaza. We opened a new Floyd Farr exhibit to honor one of our city's founders, and added interviews of both Joel Cowan and Floyd Farr to our oral history collection, which is now indexed on the Digital Library of Georgia. We've enjoyed rotating art exhibits, enhanced children's programming, and visits from authors such as DeKalb County CEO Michael Thurmond. The Peachtree City Library has the second-highest circulation in the entire Pines Consortium, which is a network of more than 300 Georgia libraries. We've kept our planning department busy. After two and a half years of grappling with the details, council passed a short-term rental ordinance that balances the private property rights of homeowners who wish to operate a short-term rental, while also putting guardrails in place to preserve the fabric of our residential communities. The members of our planning commission, a volunteer board, have stepped up with a proposal to tackle a much-needed Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO, project. This effort is a process of consolidating our land use ordinances with our zoning ordinances into one updated document that reflects our city's vision for landscaping, signage, design, setbacks, tree save, and land use citywide. Our convention and Visitors Bureau partnered with our recreation department and brought 26 individual different sporting events to Peachtree City, resulting in more than 2,000 hotel room nights. Peachtree City hosted a multitude of conferences and conventions. The CVB also hosted the first Hops and Props Beer and Aircraft Event since COVID, and it was held in our commemorative Air Force airbase. They also started a golf cart culinary tour that I hope resumes once the weather gets warm. Citizen engagement has soared this year. We continue citizen education with our Community Emergency Response Team and our Citizens Police Academy courses. In 2024, we created a revamped PTC 101 class in which 25 adult students and one gifted 14-year-old came to City Hall over a period of eight weeks to learn about how every department works. As a PTC 101 graduate myself about 20 years ago, I promise you, we need to keep an eye on these graduates, as they will no doubt be running for public office one of these days. Applications for our PTC 101 class of 25 are now open. We've formed a new transportation advisory group, a citizen board that is now navigating an update to our PATH master plan, as well as planning an implementation of ADA requirements throughout our PATH system. We've worked hard to communicate information and respond to questions from our residents. Notably, this past April, 250 of our citizens packed the house in a town hall meeting to learn about GDOT's planned project at 5474. We also conducted a town hall to share information with our citizens about the complexities of HB 581. Our inaugural Slice of the City events have reached all five villages this year. In these community meetings, our city manager and our department heads take a roadshow of sorts to provide an informational session and Q&amp;A, unique to each village and the neighborhoods within. We publish a weekly e-newsletter called The Slice with city events, meetings, and notifications. I remember when we were excited, about 600 subscribers to The Slice. Now, we've topped 20,000 subscribers. My Mondays with the Mayor videos are part of that communication, keeping our residents informed on council actions and plans. We started a quarterly e-newsletter to engage our business community. Called The Compass, it provides a vital connection between our businesses and city support. Our communications department received 15 Telly Awards for excellence in video. We were awarded four MARCOM Awards, International Recognition for Excellence in Design and Creativity. We received an Emmy nomination for a very moving Veterans Day video. I hope you will visit our Peachtree City YouTube page. You will be duly impressed. We've seen a lot of improvements at City Hall this year. In 2024, city council appointed Justin Strickland as our city manager and welcomed Chris Hobby as our new assistant city manager. The two of them have been full speed ahead. Our HR department introduced a new summer intern program, placing 11 college students in various city departments. This outstanding program was nominated for a GMA, Community Impact Award. Our Public Works Streets Crew is now fully staffed, enabling us to resolve issues within 48 hours at a lower cost compared to the weeks-long wait and higher costs that were related to using an outside contractor. Maybe you've noticed a new and improved look at City Hall. Now a source of pride, our beautiful landscaping was designed in-house by our own Laura Hooks in the Planning Department, and installed in-house by Robert Hiltzheimer, our grounds supervisor, and our wonderful grounds facilities crew. This year, we'll use Federal American Rescue Plan Act dollars to bring City Hall into compliance, ADA compliance, with an elevator. Peachtree City is unique in so many ways. That's what we love, right? Unlike most cities, we're able to honor our founders, who are still here and still contributing to our city. In May, we dedicated the new Ralph N. Jones Memorial Boat Ramp. The late Ralph Jones was, of course, our city's second mayor, and his widow Brownie Jones still lives in their original home, not far from City Hall. The morning of the dedication, we were honored to recognize four families who have lived in Peachtree City for 55 years or longer. The Jones Family, the Cowans, the Connor Family, and the Foltons, and they were all here to help us celebrate that day. What a legacy. In June, we dedicated city council chambers to Francis Metters. Francis was the first city clerk in the 1970s, and throughout the terms of four mayors, it was Francis, no doubt, who ran everything from permitting to finance. According to all four of those mayors, it was Francis who taught them how to do their jobs. We dedicated city council chambers as the Francis Metters Council Chambers on June 20th, Francis's 95th birthday. I still go to her for advice. I know that our founders are happy with where we are today in Peachtree City, but we're not done. City council and I continue to navigate the delicate balance of fiercely protecting all that we cherish about our city with smart growth strategies that will help us adapt and thrive. We have the leadership. We certainly have the staff. We have the engaged citizenry. We have all that we need to assure parks, paths, green spaces, family gatherings, and quality of life in a thriving community we can all enjoy and share for the next 65 years and beyond. I am honored to be your mayor, and it is a privilege every day to serve this incredible community. Thank you. Announcements, awards, special recognition? We have none. Public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have four individuals signed up to speak. First person signed up is Mr. Lloyd Smith.
I hate to follow that. That was a very nice speech, and it's good to hear that great things are happening in Peachtree City, and you guys all should be congratulated. I thank you very much. As you know, I am still the president of the local pickleball club. It's not a lifelong position, but playing pickleball can be a lifelong calling. We all know that the master plan is coming up for vote today, the acceptance of it. I'm hoping that you accept it. I keep telling you that this is a growing sport, and it certainly is. The month of February, we know how terrible weather can be. There are 10 cities that are holding pickleball tournaments. They are not professional tournaments. They're ones that I can join in and play. And I go there, and I spend my money on lunches, I spend my money on gas, I spend my money on many different things. That's up from last year, and next year, the number of cities in February will be even higher, not counting March and April, when the weather starts getting better. How many tournaments will be around Georgia to play? I want us, the city, to be part of that tournament and have people come to us. One of the things that we know that every day we look out and we can see Braylon Lockhouse Pickleball Courts, they're full. We have people standing around, waiting to play. One of the things that people come to me all the time and then say, hey, can we start a youth training program? I say absolutely not, because we don't have the court to support that. Once I start getting teenagers out on these courts, I won't be able to play. And I'll guarantee you, if there's any one great advantage in pickleball, it's youth. They get to everything. It's disgusting. You hit the best shot you ever made, and they get to it. So, we've stayed away from youth because of the lack of courts. You have picked a wonderful spot, at least the way I hear, at 74 and Rockaway. A beautiful corner, just perfect for pickleball and the advertising of the sport. So, please, approve the master plan, approve the funding, and let's build some courts so we can all enjoy this great game. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next person signed up to speak is Sue Reed.
I'm down here. Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I would like to thank you in advance for the recreation plan that we hope you are I would like to thank you in advance for the recreation plan that we hope you are adopting tonight. On behalf of the seven hundred and eighty PTC Fayette Pickleball Club members, we are very excited about the master plan, but I am representing them by asking questions that they would like answered. They want to know, of course, is the master plan implementation date being announced tonight? And specifically to pickleball, is that plan, being the groundbreaking, the construction timelines and all of that being announced tonight? What they really want is just information. They've been waiting a long time since, it's been two years now coming up, since this blast was approved. We sat through one year of a survey that we all kind of felt that what came out of it was pretty much what we already knew as far as pickleball goes. But I think the survey was good for the future of Peachtree City. But if at all possible, they are asking that if, as soon as you possibly can, to please give us any information that we can pass on to them so that they know that things are moving along and that we're not waiting another two years for the groundbreaking or the start of implementation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Keith Larson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and fellow residents. My name's Keith Larson. I live in Sandown Creek. And tonight, I want to talk to you about developments of regional impact. We like to cherish our bubble, but the reality is development outside of our city boundaries has an enduring impact on our quality of life. This last month, your city staff, local communities in Fayette County, and myself, were engaged in review of two developments of regional impact in East Coedda County. The first, the Benister Project, which is a revival of the McIntosh Village on the west shores of Lake McIntosh, will include over two thousand new residential housing. The other is on the south side of Sonois, which will add eight hundred houses, units. But the real story was revealed with the Sonois Project, which included citation of all the other neighborhoods below the reporting level and impact of study of DRI. All told, over the next ten years, these new neighborhoods will generate an estimated fifty thousand additional new vehicle trips a day in our border region, many of them coming through or to Peachtree City. So, we need to be conscious of that, engaged in the discussion. Some of the suggestions already floating in the responses from the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, an arm of the Atlanta Regional Commission, is the widening of State Route Fifty-four coming into Peachtree City on the west side from two lanes each direction to three. There goes your landscaping. Think about that. There's going to be some big impacts. The studies for State Route Sixteen going through Sonois, going from two lanes in each direction to four, uh, uh, one lane in each direction to two lanes in each direction. We have an opportunity strategically to think about this, what happens inside our city. Our extensive active transportation alternative network, we call the PATH system. Many people generate local trips, taking their golf cart, walking or biking instead of a car. If we can encourage our neighbors and reach out to regionally connect to Coedda County through Rockaway Road, across the Lake McIntosh Dam, and along State Route Fifty-four to Sharpsburg, we could encourage, generate trips both ways. Our residents, their people coming to shop and dining in Peachtree City on a multi-use path. So, let's consider the opportunity that we could have to improve our quality of life and to protect what's important to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Final person is Mr. Blake Hayes.
Thank you. My name is Blake Hayes. I live in the Glenlock area. With another year, just like we talked about earlier in the mayor's address, I want to celebrate some of the awesome work that the Public Works Department has done. You know, I can't necessarily claim credit for some of the things I've reported, but the issues have been addressed, so definitely want to recognize them for that. There was a tree that had fallen on a path that I was going to use that, you know, is now not on the path anymore, so that was cleared up pretty quickly. That was awesome. There was a warning sign that needed to be replaced on Wisdom Road going towards, I don't know how many years it's been there, but it still said stop sign ahead. Last time I checked, when you go to Wisdom Road, it's a signalized intersection now, and it's been the entire time I've lived here. As well as replacing a couple of stop signs on the path near the bridge, including right over there where the bridge crosses over near Partners. With the new year, though, there's still some challenges that come forward. A lot of them are operational challenges, which I, you know, have confidence based on what I previously reported. Public Works is happy to address. For example, I just went by this week, and I checked again right before the meeting, and for whatever reason, the stop sign over there by that bridge to Partners is missing again. And one of them spun around backwards where it's on the wrong side. So, I don't know if it's a thing where, you know, somebody's intentionally doing this or not. There's also a missing sign under the tunnel, a missing stop sign under the tunnel that leads to McDonald's. So, again, I don't know if we have sign theft gang in our city or something like that. But, you know, again, I have faith that Public Works will get those corrected. However, there's also some things above the operational level challenges for the council to consider in the upcoming year. A lot of these are things where it's policy decisions that, you know, you guys have the authority to make. And that includes several items I've talked about before. That includes, you know, the speed limit on Robinson Road, including the school zone area, having flashing lights on school zones instead of just the little plaques we have underneath them with the times that are hard to read as you go by. Those are policy decisions that you guys can make. And of course, then Public Works would go out and actually do the work. I'm not expecting you guys to be out there with the, you know, screwdriver replacing the signs. On top of that, there's a couple of things in the city's traffic ordinance that potentially could be looked at with you guys in this upcoming year. For example, we just put in a new pedestrian hybrid beacon, also known as a hawk crossing. We have a couple of them in the city. But they still have a stop sign on them because the ordinance says that golf carts have to, well, every user of a path, including golf carts and bicyclists, have to stop when they leave the path. So, the question is, I push the button, the light comes on, it says cross. Do I still have to stop at the stop sign? And that doesn't just apply at these new beacons. It also applies at a couple of signalized intersections on Highway Fifty-four. I pushed, there's a sign there that says push button to cross. I push the button to cross. It tells me to cross. There's still a stop sign. Do I need to stop? Can I get a ticket if I run through it, even though the light says cross? That's something in the ordinance that you guys could take a look at. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Agenda changes, council? No. Minutes, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, City Council meeting minutes. December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, executive session minutes, and January second, two thousand and twenty-five, City Council work session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes. That's submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda items A through G. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Old agenda items one twenty-five oh one, Recreation Master Plan Adoption.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually have a short presentation for this one because I know it's a, it's a big deal, this item. We've been working on it for a while. So, first off, I just wanted to go through kind of a timeline of the process that we've done to get to this point. May two thousand and twenty-three, and we actually were conceptualizing, going through this process even before May of last year. But May of two thousand and twenty-three, we put out an RFP for a Recreation Master Plan. In August, we awarded that to CPL, and we started having initial meetings with staff. December to April was kind of the big period of data collection. It's when they got out into the field, visited all the parks, all of our athletic fields, all of our facilities, and started gathering all that data. They also put out the survey, the citizen survey during that time, where we had over two thousand people respond to that survey. I think we had it out for six months, and over two thousand people responded, which is the most we've ever had respond to a survey. We usually have over a thousand, but this time we got over two thousand. They did stakeholder interviews, which included all of us up here. It included a lot of the athletic associations. It included civic groups, the running club, the biking club, which I think they were a little later, but they did get to them. And then they also did community outreach by going to some of our events and engaging with citizens with a table. And then in March, during that period of data collection, CPL did come to a council meeting and gave you all an update on the initial survey results while it was still out. Then we got to October, December, where they submitted the draft plan to us and came back and did an October work session with council, which was a long one. It was our first work session we did, and it was two hours. Like maybe the first hour and a half was that, was the rec master plan. Council gave feedback on that draft version. CPL went back and made changes. And then in December, submitted the final version of the plan, which was given to you all. So, now we're up to January. So, in the work session, CPL came back two weeks ago and was here for any last-minute questions or items that council had. And so now, we're at the, at the regular meeting for hopefully adoption tonight. And then I just wanted to put up here too, you know, a future, a two thousand and twenty-five, how does this, how does this continue? And I'll get into that in a future slide, too. But the big thing is, is council prioritization, because there's a lot of stuff in this document. I mean, this document is over two hundred pages long with the appendices, and there's a lot to go through. It's a massive document that's going to take council and citizens and staff to go through and figure out how you want to do this. What do you want to prioritize? Because it'll be impossible. It'll be impossible to, when I say impossible, it will be impossible to do everything all at once feasibly. And if we even do anything. So, also with the new Recreation Advisory Group, we want to get them on board and up to speed with the document. As far as staff goes, I think one of the things we want to focus on, at least to begin with, too, is some of the doable things. Some of the things in there that are more minor, maintenance things, things that we can just do without really having to spend a whole lot of money and just plan and do maintenance better. And then also getting our sports associations and private partnerships, getting the plan in front of some people and getting buy-in from those groups as well. So, a couple of things, I'm just going to go through a couple of, and when I get to the last slide, I'll kind of summarize everything. But there were seven, seven really big initiatives in the plan. There's a lot more than seven initiatives, but seven really big ones. And I'm going to go through those seven. First one is Braylon Recreation. So, this is Braylon Recreation down off Loghouse Road. If you've been to some of these meetings, you've seen this. But this is Loghouse Road here. Here's the entrance to the parking lot. This is the concept of what CPL has provided, of what this place could possibly be. So, if you know over in this section here, there's a baseball field here that the fence has been taken out of. It's not really used for anything beyond passive recreation at this point. There's, oh, my thing went away. It's gone. Well, my laser's not working. Yeah, let me see that one. Sorry. There we go. I do a mouse. There are soccer fields currently right here that I know the Soccer Association uses for smaller children, uses for the younger leagues. Their concept is to take all of this space and develop it into one massive, I'll use this one, into one massive field space for a cricket pitch. And also, the cricket pitch could be used for soccer fields as well. So, it would be a multipurpose, but be able to fit cricket into it. And as we've heard from other presentations that CPL has done, cricket is a big sport that people are requesting in our community. They've rearranged the three baseball fields here. This is not the way they are right now. They still have them, but they've shifted how they are. They leave the basketball courts. You notice here, this is where the current pickleball courts are. They've recommended that they go back to tennis courts. And then they also, there's a playground right here right now, and they're recommending that it moves up to here and is, you know, becomes a new playground. So, those are the highlights for that area. Here's why some people are here tonight. This is the proposal for pickleball. This is currently the Rockaway Compost Site area. What they're recommending is to bring pickleball over to this site. We do have two private pickleball entities coming, but this would be public. It would be outdoors. And this is, the concept has twenty-four courts here. And I do want to tell everybody in the audience, this is a concept. This is not a final design or anything like that. So, they have this. This is where the current cell tower is. So, we couldn't put any courts here, but there's a parking lot here. Plenty, want to have plenty of parking with pickleball courts there. So, if we zoom out a little bit, Mead is where they have made a lot of recommendations. So, this is the compost site. This is where they would have pickleball. The other huge thing that they're recommending, probably the biggest project they're recommending in the plan, is a natatorium. So, this is an indoor swimming facility with a lap pool, with a diving well, with basketball courts, and I think also community rooms and stuff like that. So, this is basically the site where the current adult softball fields are that are also really not being used for any organized sports right now. And then if we zoom out even further, this is still Mead. Pickleball site here, natatorium and stuff up here. This is girl's softball. And then they also are recommending another nature area down in the south part of Mead. They did change this for any, any part that they're recommending of trails within the flood plain. They're recommending that be boardwalk area. So, they have trails back in the woods here with boardwalks down here. Pebble Pocket. So, for Pebble Pocket, they're recommending a splash pad here where the swimming pool used to be. They're recommending a smaller playground here, and then trails throughout the, throughout the complex with some additional parking over here on the corner as well.
Sorry, that green streak was me. Sorry. I'm trying to take it off.
They can get you. Oh, now my clicker's not working. You need to do something. There we go. All right. This is the second to last one, Battery Way. So, Battery Way, we've had requests for restrooms over there, so they have us adding restrooms at Battery Way right here. They have us doing more with playground space here. I think they're recommending a play area here. And then this one, let me see, that's number two. Yeah, play area here. So, almost all of this, they're kind of recommending for play area. And I think they're recommending this for a kind of lounge picnic area up here, and then with the bathroom right here. And they're also recommending electric charging stations, I think, along here for carts. And then finally, lastly, of the seven huge, you know, kind of big projects they're recommending is the Kelly Drive Property, which we do have funding for in Spawst to redevelop this area because it's really kind of an open field right now since the community garden left. Is, you know, expanded parking here. I think a pavilion here for a potential farmer's market, bringing the farmer's market onto city property. A Veterans Plaza, and then a smaller kind of grassy amphitheater at this area. And then just really kind of open field space and wooded areas with a path going through it. So, those are the seven kind of huge projects, really kind of changing parks that we have in the city that they've recommended. But to summarize, they have over thirty capital projects and upgrades that are in the plan, being recommended with those seven big projects as the major highlights. Many of the projects have no funding identified. I just want to highlight that. These are, these are projects that CPL is recommending. Some of these do have funding that, you know, we've told them things that we've kind of already funded, and they've worked those. worked those into the plan. But a lot of their recommendations have no funding identified yet. The biggest thing, as we move forward with this, is going to be prioritization of projects by our city council. One of the other, some other key things they're recommending are fee changes. They're, they're saying we need to renegotiate our county fees with Fayette County, eliminate our athletic field lighting fees, and update to our rental and program rates. They're also, oh, I put a P at the end by accident over there. But they're also recommending we continue our Spawst programs to fund some of these major capital projects. They've recommended some additional staff positions. One of those we actually already, because this was a snapshot of early 2024, in fiscal year 25, we've actually already hired a full-time special events person. A second one, so that one is done, but they have recommended some other positions. Big, big recommendation that I think fits with our community is preserve our green space. And then the continued maintenance and especially preventative maintenance, having a good schedule and making sure our facilities are upgraded and maintained to the standard that our citizens expect. Last thing I have before I'm going to turn it over to you all to discuss is next steps. My biggest thing, and this is really for you all as council, is this is a planning document. It does not mean that everything in this document will be accomplished, especially within two, three, four, five years. This is a long-term document. There's a lot of stuff in this that is going to take time to do. We have limited funding. We have to look at feasibility. And then we also have, there's only so much time that staff, that we can spend on each thing. So the biggest thing moving forward for me, and this is just me as staff, is the council prioritization of the recommendations that CPL has given us. So the biggest thing for staff is going to be, what does council and vis a vis the citizens want to see first? Like, want to see, what do we prioritize first? What do we prioritize second? Because the old saying with an elephant, because this is an elephant, is you eat it one bite at a time. And that's what this is going to have to take. Recreation Advisory Group, once they get formed, we want to have their review and feedback on a lot of the things. Staff objectives for the doable items, maintenance plans, fee reviews and updates that we can bring to council, and then discussions with the sports associations and private entities for potential partnerships for some of these projects. So that's what I have, and I'm going to turn it over to council.
All right. Counsel, can we start with a motion and a second so we can begin our discussion?
Madam Mayor, for Old Agenda Item 12501, I move that we adopt the Recreation Master Plan.
Second, I recommend, if I could add, or we adopt it so we can pay off CPL. CPL's waiting to get paid.
Well, we'll, we'll adopt it and we'll let Justin take care of the rest.
I'd like to make an amendment to that.
We have a motion and a second, and now we'll start discussion.
I think we should make the motion to accept the plan as presented by CPL and authorize that they be paid for their contractual services.
Why is this, all right, is that in the agenda packet? Is that
What?
The phrasing that you just made to get them paid? Is that in the agenda packet?
No.
I'm asking. Are you worried about getting them paid?
No, 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 that's just the part of the, no. I'm just saying that we should accept it and not, not approve it.
We're, we're adopting it. The Old Agenda Item is Recreation Master Plan Adoption. That's what's been published. And we have a motion and a second for adoption. Am I correct, Frank?
Yes.
Ted, is there, is there any difference between accepting and adopting?
Accepting is just accepting the fact that you've received the product from CPL, which you can move forward with payment. That they've done, they've completed their contractual obligations. Adoption is formally adopting what's in the plan.
And see, I don't think we're adopting the plan.
We are adopting the plan. That's why it's in here. The actual payment terms are in the contract, and that is the city manager's responsibility. He'll take care of that. Now that we get this adopted, he'll take care of the rest of that. That's part of his job. What we're doing is adopting what's in the plan, as Justin has explained. Knowing that this is a planning document, it doesn't mean everything will be accomplished. There are considerations for funding, feasibility, resources, things like that. The, the motion and the second is for adoption. Is there content that you wish to talk about or anything else we need to cover before we take a vote?
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that, that the city understands this is adopting the plan. It's not accepting each project to be done.
Oh, correct. That's correct.
Because as you said, this is a 10-year plan, and it's going to take a lot of time to get.
And I would venture to say conservatively that I don't think we could do everything in 10 years.
I agree with you, Justin.
Yeah, yeah. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I don't have any questions. I feel like this is, we had the opportunity, we were looking at adopting this last month. We postponed it a little bit so we could iron any details out in our work session. I feel like we've done that, and I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with adopting it.
Suzanne, anything else? Ms. Brown?
No, just that I'd like to change the word, accept for the adoption.
Mr. Dastadia, anything else?
I'm fine with the way it's written, because I made it clear that we're not going to be funding anything right away. So adopting it is just adopting the plan.
That's right. My only comment is, we are going into a retreat in February, and council will be highly focused on prioritizing these projects. We are underway right now with interviews for our Recreation Advisory Group, so we are ready to move forward. We know you've been waiting a long time, and I'm as excited as you are to move forward. So I, I'm very excited. With that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for. Thank you.
Thank you.
New Agenda Item, Public Hearing 12502, variance request from rear setback 102 Flintlock Court.
The protocol is as follows. When the public hearing is opened, members of council will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the hearing complete. First, city staff will present the request and provide an assessment of compliance with city code. The mayor will then allow up to 10 minutes for speakers of each side of the issue to present evidence. No individual member of the public will be given more than five minutes to speak. Time limits may only be extended by a majority vote of council, and will be divided equally between those supporting and those opposing the issue. The mayor will recognize the applicant and those supporting the issue to present evidence. Remarks will be limited to a total of 10 minutes. The mayor will then recognize those opposing the issue to present evidence for up to 10 minutes. Prior to closing the public hearing, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions of either or both sides of the issue. When the mayor and the council are assured that the presentation of evidence is complete, the public hearing shall be ended, and the council may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. One, please wait to be recognized by the mayor. Two, come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks. Three, keep individual remarks under five minutes and do not repeat comments of others. And four, address all comments to the mayor. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. We have a, the variance request tonight is for a rear setback encroachment. The property is located at 102 Flintlock on this parcel right here, and the zone is R15. The, our code enforcement team discovered that a shed was being built on this property without a permit. And then when the permit application came in, well, for review, we discovered that it was located in a rear setback. And at the same time, we also noticed that there was an existing deck on the property that was encroaching into the rear setback. So right here is that existing deck that I was referring to. And this deck was built by a previous owner, not the current property owner. And the shed in question is right here. And this purple dash line represents the rear setback, which is 30 feet. The site is a corner lot, and per the recorded plat, the front setbacks are 45 feet. You, this dash line right here represents the front setback line, and then the side setback line is 10 feet, I believe. Right, right there, the edge of the driveway, sort of. So, let's see. So the, the deck shown in red would require, well, first of all, the, the deck, which was built by a previous owner, is required to, would require a variance to bring the property into compliance. And then the shed requires the variance before construction could continue on the shed. The deck requires a, a variance to allow an encroachment of 6.2 feet into the rear setback. And the shed, again, in blue, would require a variance to allow a 12.2-foot encroachment. Should the council decide to approve this request, staff recommends that the color scheme of the accessory structure shall blend with the colors of the primary structure or be earth tones. There is a picture of the shed in progress down here at the edge of the So variance criteria, when you're reviewing a request for variance, shall, the city council shall not grant the request unless all of the following findings can be made. One, there are special circumstances applicable to this property, including location, shape, size, surroundings, or topography, so that the strict application of this ordinance denies the property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification. B, the strict or literal interpretation and application of this ordinance would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, or would deprive the applicant of privileges granted to others in similar circumstances. C, there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved or the intended development of the property, which preclude the applicant from complying with this ordinance, and that do not apply generally to other property in the same zoning district, and which prevent the applicant from complying with existing regulations. D, the granting of such variance would not constitute the granting of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations on other property in the same zoning district. E, the granting of such variance will not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, nor injuri, injur, injurious to property or improvements in the zone or neighborhood in which the property is located. And finally, the granting of such variance will not create inconsistencies with any objective of the comprehensive plan. Let's see. As part of the packet, the applicant provided a justification narrative, a site survey, and letters of support from their neighbors, which were all in your memo. And I believe the applicant is here to answer any of your questions.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to take the microphone and, and make any comments, share anything?
My name's David Hart. This is my property at 102 Flintlock. The structure there is built as really a pool house next to my pool. I, I guess I read what I wanted to hear, and it's a movable structure that I built and didn't realize I had to have a permit. And I guess because of the size, it needs a permit. It's, it's, where it's built is because, really more because water coming down the driveway naturally flows towards the house and then back to the other side. So I just started and built it at a location with the natural flow of water. And so that's where it's at. To move it forward wouldn't be an option, really. My only options are to sell it, or, or, I mean, there's some other places to move it, but it really blocked our, our ability to leave the house from the garage if it was moved farther forward, and I'd have to build it on blocks so the natural flow of water would go up underneath it, or tear up the whole driveway to route water away. It's just kind of down at the end of the driveway would be a, it puddles up over there. So there's, I, I don't really want to block my driveway. Well, not block my driveway, block the cars from leaving the garage into the driveway. So it's really the only place that I had to put the pool house, also to keep my pickleball equipment and golf equipment. It's a, it's just a storage area, really, for recreational equipment and pool stuff.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none. I hereby close the public hearing. Counsel, I, I might start with a question, Laura. Is there an elephant in the room, and that is the pool and decking that are in a setback?
It's, it's all permitted.
That's all?
Yes. Permitted, permitted and allowed. No, no variances were required.
I see. Thank you. Because it's a pool.
Yes.
And the, the existing deck was found to be in the setback by six feet from a previous owner?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, so the issue is a shed. Okay. All right. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments, concerns?
Is the, is the pool properly fenced?
It, it should be, yes.
Because it's hard to tell from the diagram exactly, like, if there is a fence and where it is.
You could ask the, the applicants here. You have a fence around the pool?
Please take the microphone for me, then we have you on record.
In this picture, there's not a fence, so the fence went up later. So the fence ties in, too, and goes around the shed. So there's fencing around it now.
Okay. And, and can you tell me, is, is, this is on Flintlock. The feeder street is called?
Fieldstone?
Fieldstone. And is it 100 Fieldstone that is behind the house? And I'm curious to know, the reason I'm asking is, is that house providing a, a letter of support? The people who look at the backyard would be, it's 100, but is it Fieldstone? Yes, please, microphone.
So, so the Fieldstone house is actually backed up to the pool. It's actually a longer drive house that's behind the shed.
It's a what?
Longer drive.
Longer drive is what's actually behind the shed.
Longer, longer drive.
So it's the, my property's longer than the, than the Fieldstone. It's, well, there's a little corner of it that would be, but most of it is around, is on longer, behind the shed.
Laura, can you point to longer drive on this diagram?
It's not going to be on the diagram.
Well, it's not on the diagram, but I think the lot he's talking about is
Yeah, that, that house there is the longer drive.
Is on longer drive. Here's the property line going off at an angle, and then this way. So the letters are coming from, I believe, these, this property, this property, and that property.
Show me the front of the house.
This is the front of the house.
And, and when you leave and get, keep going out to their street.
So this is a cul-de-sac.
Right. But let's go out of the cul-de-sac. Now we're driving in our car.
To Flintlock.
And that Flintlock, come back just a little bit. That road you're on at the top of this diagram is Flintlock?
This is Fieldstone?
Fieldstone. And, and there's
This is Flintlock.
I drove it and went and looked at it. So it seems to me that about where your arrow is, go to the left a little bit, and a little more, and a little more, and there is a house facing Fieldstone, and their address on the mailbox is 100. Is that a true statement? Do we have a letter of support from them?
Not, not, well
Was that, was that not called?
You're saying that's 100 Fieldstone? We do have a letter from 100 Fieldstone.
Okay. That's what I want to find. If I were that neighbor, I would want to be, I'm going to go back and look at the letters now. Counsel, do you have any other questions, concerns?
Laura, can you answer, okay. So how much work was done on the shed when the stop work order was issued?
It, that much, that you see right there.
That doesn't look like it's completed.
No, it's not. It's, it's
Because it's completed now.
I don't know that, well, I mean, I'm, it has doors. It's, it's fairly far along, yes. But, I mean, it's, you know, I think it's missing doors and, you know, the final
So there's doors on it.
Oh, I did not know that.
Did you see the door? And Mayor, the 100 Fieldstone is in the packet as page 110.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
These are, this is a photograph that was taken by the code enforcement officer the day that they issued the stop-work order.
Laura, can you answer a question for me?
Sure.
It seems like when I was reading this packet, it was saying something as far as because this shed, it's movable, but because it was larger than a certain size, then it wasn't allowed to be in the setback. Is there a movable structure of a certain size that is allowed to be there? And if so, how much bigger is this structure than what's allowed?
Movable isn't, isn't really the operative word. Any, any structure, they're very small, actually, and it depends on the length of the rear property line. This one is quite, quite long, so it would, I believe it would allow a, oh, let's see. I think it's only like 100 foot, 100 square foot, a very small shed. So this is much larger than, than a, than a structure that would be permitted in the rear.
100 square feet?
Yes.
Is that right? And how big was this one?
I was going to say, I can't see it from there. Oh, yeah, 220, 220 square feet, sorry about that.
And you're saying it doesn't really matter whether it's movable or not? It's just a structure regardless?
Typically, those smaller structures are, you know, more portable. You know, something you would buy at Home Depot to put in the backyard, easily movable.
Can I ask the homeowner a question? Was this what this shed looked like when the stop-work order was given?
So I got a stop-work order on, on a, like a delivery of that or when I talked to the code enforcement. I had ordered the doors and they were installed. The only other thing is gutters. So the gutters are put on there after, too.
You're saying the doors were already installed when you got the stop-work order?
No, no, the doors were already ordered and in my garage, and I had them installed. And then gutters put on, they were already ordered.
Okay, so after a stop-work order, there was some work that was done?
Yes.
Yes.
So the garage orders, I had somebody else install the garage. They were already ordered. The gutters, I actually put on myself.
Thank you. I'm very confused by these letters, like page 116, 114, 113. For example, page 116, the last document in our packet. "I'm writing to request consent regarding the request for an administrative variance for a rear setback on my property." It reads as if, Mr. Hart, Hart, correct? It reads as if this is your letter, and it says below the signature, 100 Fieldstone Lane. And I don't know whose signature that is.
So I believe he's, he's writing to the neighbors. He wrote a letter to the neighbors requesting their consent, and then the neighbors signed.
Okay.
Does that make sense? It's a little different than what we usually receive.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah, so when I was originally told, I was told to do an administrative appearance and told to write a letter to the neighbors, and that's what I did. So, so the 102, I talked to them, gave them that. They said they wanted to talk to a lawyer or real estate. They're thinking about selling their house. I don't know if that signature's on there or my signature. I signed all the documents when I sent them to the neighbors and talked to the neighbors.
So do we have neighbor's signatures on these letters?
Yeah, this one clearly starts with an M and a K, Kirchner. The 103 round leaf.
According to Q Public Net, the owner of 100 Fieldstone is Kathryn and Graham Ripley. That doesn't look like the signature.
It does, it does start with a K.
No, on the other thing, it says Kathryn with a C.
Aha.
Kathryn and Graham Ripley, R-I-P-L-E-Y.
Maybe it's an R? Do you see that where it kind of goes down, an R? It kind of looks like a K, but it could be that it got cut off. I'm trying to get the benefit of the doubt here.
Is it possible that we need a little bit more clarification and information before we were to proceed? Would it be reasonable to withdraw? And I am sorry for delays. I know how frustrating that can be. It's, I feel unprepared to make a good decision, given all these questions and concerns about ownership. And honestly, I'm inclined to, to see it from your point of view if, if I knew that all the neighbors were cool with it and I had their consent on this. I just don't see it, and I'm really sorry about that. Anybody else?
I have another comment or two. I do want to say that in 2025, I think it's pretty difficult for us to believe that a homeowner in Peachtree City actually doesn't realize that they need a building pit, pit permit to put in a large shed on their property. And as stated in the memo from city staff, they were given a stop-work order and are now asking for the required variance. I've seen several requests over the last few years where construction has begun without the required permits. We need to guard against simply approving variances after a stop-work order or after learning a homeowner has completed a project without proper permits. Each time we do approve something after the fact, it reinforces that it's easier to ask for forgiveness than to ask for permission. Setbacks exist for many reasons, to protect neighbors from a homeowner overbuilding their property. And as difficult as it might be, I think we should be voting to deny the application and instruct the homeowner to remove what was built without the proper permit or variance.
Anyone else?
I was just going to say, I can't believe that you built this whole thing and didn't realize you needed to have a permit. That's what Councilwoman Brown is saying as well. That's a pretty big structure you put up there, and you had no idea at all that there was going to be a variance requirement? Or a permit?
I did not. I realized I needed to permit the pool. I permitted the pool. I didn't permit the structure with the pool.
Thank you.
Any, any last comments, Ms. Johnson?
I mean, pools and structures are completely different. With a pool, you can go further into a setback, but this structure, it's, it's, it's very large. So, but it seems like this variance is twofold. We have one for the structure and also one for a deck. And we're talking a lot about this structure, and we're not talking about the deck. And I wouldn't mind, I don't know if we could do, there's, it's either, it's one or...
I think it's all, because it's all as one.
Let's hear her question.
Could we approve partial and not approve the other? Because I would say with the deck that was there, it's not extending as, as far into, I drove by it. I would be okay with saying granting a variance for the deck that existed before the homeowner was there. I would not be inclined to approve the variance for the shed.
I would be inclined to approve the deck tonight. And if that happens, then what is his process for the second, for the second component? For the, just the shed?
It depends on what counsel decides to do.
If we were to approve the deck variance tonight, then what's his next step on the shed?
What's counsel's action on the shed?
My action would be to deny the shed.
In other words, you could approve the deck and reject the shed. You could approve both, you could reject both.
Or we could approve the deck and then ask for, I'd like further information and clarification to, to hear from the neighbors. Does anyone else want to do that?
No. I think he's had an adequate amount of time to provide letters from the neighbors. The one that's most greatly impacted is the one that you pointed out. He should have a really glowing thing that says, "I have no problem with this coming this close to my back property line." He doesn't have that. So I say the shed, no. The deck, I would, I would concede the deck. It was built by a prior owner. There is a different consideration there. It does infringe a little bit further, obviously, than an administrative variance allows. And that's why he's here with both the issues.
I'll take.
I, I think we should take action on both. He could come back in 180 days.
I'll take a motion.
I make a motion that we deny the variance request for the shed, and we approve the variance request for the deck.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any last discussion?
Can I still ask a question? So it seems like this property owner that's on the back, this, what was it, 100? Is there anything that the property owner can shed some light on since this is in question? How did you obtain this? This permission slip from him? How did that?
I, I wrote the, I wrote a letter, and I took it to all the neighbors. One of them was a deceased, and so I had to contact their son. They mailed it back. The one in question, I talked to them. Then I found out it was no longer administrative variance. That's what I thought I had to have the thing. And I said, you know, they, they did have questions. They had questions about their property value with selling. So they, I was no longer pursuing getting their, their signature because it went from an administrative variance, what I thought, because that's what I read about administrative variance. I needed a consent from the neighbors. They, I can ask them to come bring up there. It's not like we're not friendly.
You, you have a signed document here from that address.
Well, so I didn't send in a signed document from that address. I have, all the documents I have have my signature on them, and then I sent them to somebody and they sent them back. So I'm unaware of what signature is on there.
You have three documents that have three separate signatures.
Correct. So I have the signature from just behind me, which is Harriet. I can't remember her last name. That's the one that I think is the closest.
Batson, you have that one.
So I talked to her, then I have one from the, across the street, which was now no longer owns the home. My brother owns that home, but I have the signature from him. It was a, it was a foreclosure that they bought, and he, he signed it. And the only one that I don't have is the one directly behind me on Flint, on Fieldstone. So I should have three.
Underneath that signature, it says 100 Fieldstone Lane.
That's this.
Is that not the correct address for that signature?
That, that is, that's the signature there. I did not receive a signature from him. I sent him something, asked him to sign. He told me that he needed to talk to, he wanted to talk to a real estate agent and a lawyer. I understand that he called up here and talked to some people in the building department, but he never sent it back to me signed. I have the signature from three of them, not from four.
Okay, so this letter really didn't come from anybody at Fieldstone Lane?
Unless they came up here and signed it up here?
I'm, I'm not really sure. They, I was handed the documents from the front office. So I missed, I was assuming that all the neighbors signed. I mean, it, it's definitely not his signature.
Why is it addressed to Dear Donna O'Kelly Realtors, Inc.?
So that is the people that live in the house next to me. They own that house. They're the ones that signed off, didn't have a, that, they no longer own that house. So that's who owned the house at the time. It was for sale. I got them to sign the document. They sent it back to me. They had no problem. Now my brother owns that home. So I could get something from him.
It's just the wrong address. It says 100 Fieldstone Lane, but whoever signed this, that's not the, we don't have the signature from that property, even though this document has, someone wrote that address on here. So obviously, that's not correct.
You're correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, then, I would have to.
I have a motion and a second. The motion is to approve the deck and disapprove the shed. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Sorry. Counsel staff topics. I have one I'll start with. I want to give some accolades to our city manager, Justin Strickland. Peachtree City is excited to announce that our city manager has recently received a credentialed manager designation from ICMA, International City County Management Association. It's a very elite group. He is one of over 1,300 local government management professionals credentialed through ICMA. This is something we compelled him to finish up as far as his professional credentials go. In order to receive this, a member must have significant experience as a senior management executive in local government. And he has been a leader in not only municipalities, but also Marion County. Must have earned a degree. He's got several, preferably in public administration. We're there. And he's certainly demonstrated a commitment to high standards of integrity, lifelong learning, and professional development. So please help me thank Justin Strickland for his. All right, anybody else? Counsel staff topic.
Oh. It's down on the second page, sorry. Got Dave.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Dave Vorkowski, city engineer. Wanted to take the opportunity tonight to advise counsel of some needed, some really needed emergency stormwater expenditures that we are, we're proceeding with. The stormwater department's had a very difficult past year, to say the least. We've had three different stormwater managers. We've had multiple state audits with different agencies coming to look at our program and, and rate us, and a significant project load this past year. We've been inundated with, with several stormwater projects that we've had to put on our future CIP list due to just, we don't have enough funding for, for all of the things that, that we've been finding. The, the plan was to address these projects as part of the, our, a future potential stormwater bond funded through a stormwater utility rate study that's, that's currently underway. And, and I'll just segue to that real quick. We're, we're supposed to be done with the study the end of this month, and we'll be coming to counsel with some, some workshops to basically show what, what we're going to need to do with our rate to, to pay for the different things that we, we need. So shifting gears back to this. So due to the degradation that's occurred over the past few months, a few of these projects have, in my mind, have elevated to emergency status. We, we need to do something right away, sooner than later. These projects are, there's three of them. There's 27 Park Gate Lane, which is a detention pond failure that we have. A Braylon Court pipe collapse is another one, and Southwick pipe collapse. These are the three, three highest ones right now. And I'll, I'll segue to the, to the PowerPoint here just to show you the locations and, and what we're looking at. So this is 27 Park Gate. This is right where the, this is Blue Smoke. This is where the, the rec facility is there on Blue Smoke. And there's a detention pond in the corner of that facility that you, you can't really see. Here's a, a street view of it. The, the grassy area on the left, that's the pond dam right there. And you can see homes on the one side of it. And then lower, on the lower side of the street, we've got homes there as well. So what we've got is a, a pipe failure of the, of the pipe through the dam. Here's the inside of the pipe that's in the dam. It looks like it's been chewed up and spit out. It's, it's really bad. And there's also what we call piping along the outside of the, the pipe with erosion through the dam. So this is one that we're, we're really worried about and want to get, want to get done right away. This other one is Braylon Court. You've got the amphitheater right here. And then this lot here highlighted in purple is, is 114 Braylon Court. And you can see the picture on the right-hand side. The, the storm drain catch basin at the road, and it goes underneath all these utilities. And then right through there, probably within six or seven feet of the, the foundation of the home here, we've got some significant sink holes right there that we've got barricades and stuff around right now. And this is the inside of that pipe next to the home. The picture on the right basically shows a section of the pipe that's completely gone. And there's like a, like a little pond underneath the, underneath the pipe that's been eroding away for some time. So this is, this has really raised our eyebrows because it is so close to the, to the house. We need to get, need to get it taken care of. And then the third one, 214 Southwick. This is just down the hill from, from a previous project that we did earlier on Lexington. We, we replaced a pipe segment there. This is further down, and it goes into one of the Kedron, Kedron ponds up there on the north side of, of the city. We've got a pipe collapse and failure there. The, the picture on the right is, is what it looks like today, the significant sink hole in the area, which we, we did put those barriers back up. They're not laying down now. They're not laying down now. The picture on the left is what it used to look like. You can see, uh, the area right in here, it used to, used to have a nice lawn, and now it's, uh, a, a big sink hole right now. And here's, uh, some pictures of the inside of that one, we've got some significant, uh, pipe separation here. This is, this is dirt, you're not supposed to see that when you go down a, down a storm drain. So we've got a significant failure there. We've been working diligently on preliminary designs for, for some of these surveys, geotech studies. We, we had to do, uh, a geotech on the Park Gate Pond to see what kind of soils we've got, uh, to work with there. So we, we've been doing that to address these critical projects so we can get quotes and go out to bid, but given the location and the degradation of, of, of these, you know, being so close to residences, we feel that, uh, at this point, we really just needed to get quotes and, and get this done versus dragging it out for another couple of months, uh, doing bids. We've received quotes to address the Park Gate Pond and Braylon Court Pipe Project. The Southwick Pipe is currently in design and should be done, uh, shortly. We received two quotes for the Park Gate Pond Restoration. The lowest was three hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty. Uh, the, the highest one was, uh, over half a million on, on that one. We requested three, three quotes for the, uh, Braylon Court Project, we only received one unfortunately for forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Do another segue here, this is, this is, uh, another reason why we are currently going out, we're, we're issuing an RFP shortly for on-call stormwater contractors. So we can call them up and say, look, we've got an issue, we need you here. You know, within forty-eight hours, I think is what I put in the, the RFP. Come look at this and give us a price to, to do it. So, uh, we're, we're working towards that so we don't have to deal with this, um, necessarily i- in the future. The Southwick Project, they said that, that'll be coming, uh, later. Therefore, we're, we're just advising council of these emergency expenditures that we're, we're, we need to move forward with. It's a total of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. And, uh, the funding is, is gonna come from the stormwater utility. We have, uh, six hun- over six hundred thousand budgeted per year to do pipe replacement, lining projects, and this'll take a big, big chunk of that, but, uh, it's, it's really needed. So, uh, were there any, any questions on, on these projects?
Just a one question, David, how long have these been going on?
Uh, we discovered the, uh, they were earlier this year, uh, when, when we had, uh, previous stormwater manager, they were discovered, and we, we started working on them, doing the designs and whatnot. So, uh, we, we knew about them and we were hoping we had more time to, you know, complete actual designs and bidding processes and stuff, but we, we, we just don't have that, have that luxury at this point.
What does an on-call, uh, stormwater resource company do? Come out and just stabilize? So you can get by while you do the-
No, they would actually do all the work, they would, uh, assess the problem and, and give us a price to, to do all of the work. Our, our goal is to get at least three on-call contractors that we can call to come out and do like these emergency situations, so we'll have, so we'll have three good quotes, uh, to work from.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask some questions from a legal standpoint?
Please.
David, could you go back to the first one?
This one?
Right, what is the threat? I mean, you're worried about the dam breaching?
Yes.
Is that your concern?
Yes.
What is the threat? Are there houses across the street that could be damaged if the lake drained out?
If, yeah, if that breached, yeah, water would go in the house. Depending on how-
So that would probably classify as a legal emergency, under the Public Works bidding law, that's why I'm trying to clarify.
Yes.
Okay, go to the next one. That one's pretty self, this one's pretty self-explanatory. You're talking about the area in the sinkholes right agi- I mean, within fifty, twenty feet of the house. Okay, go on to the last one. Where's, is there a damage to, or potential damage to any structures on this instance?
This one, it's, it's a little further away, uh, that, the, this picture over here is, is like right in here, but we've also got some more, uh, sinkholes further down, closer to the house. We're not requesting emerg- we're not looking at doing emergency funds on this one just yet. We've got a little bit more time to do the design and whatnot, and I'd like to go out to bid.
When you, assuming council blesses going forward with these, we're just gonna need to document in the staff memo why it's an emergency, so that we can justify why we're not using the Public Works bidding process.
Yes, that's the, that's the idea.
But you're, you're only asking for emergency on the first two.
Yes, yes, this is, this is just a FYI, what's, what's coming. We're hoping to do this under the regular, you know, design bid.
Ted, if they blessed to proceed as an emergency with the first two, once we have, once we have everything, have the prices and stuff, we still come back to council retroactively and get approval?
Actually, you, the goal should be to get the quotes and everything in order to have it on the next agenda.
Right.
I mean, as opposed to coming back and blessing it after the fact, I don't like that concept. I think council needs to know what they're looking at.
Right, we have the quotes for the first two.
I understand that, but council isn't privy to them, all the different. I think that needs to be written up and documented why it's an emergency in the council memo, if they're going to approve it, and I think they could do that at their next work session.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
David, that looks like you've had some trenching, what else, where you got the barriers there? That you've put back, those look like backhoe.
It, it does look like a, a backhoe trench, but it, that, that is where it's failing over the pipe. The, uh, that's showing you approximately how, how wide the pipe is and, and, and the hole. That's just, that's just sinking on its own right there, there's no, no digging that was done there.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, can you tell us the, the numbers for the first two projects again? A low bid?
They were, let's see, for Park Gate, the lowest was three thirteen, one forty. And we received two quotes for, for that. And then the, uh, the Braylon Court, we requested three, and we only received one for forty-five, six twenty-four.
Forty-five thousand?
Yes, forty-five thousand, six twenty-four. For a total of three fifty-eight, seven sixty-four.
Questions?
Um, I was curious as to the age of these pipes. Is age part of, it seems like some of this is corrosion?
Yes, these are, as you saw from the pictures, these are metal pipes that have been in the ground for, uh, since the, uh, the eighties and nineties. So. We would be, we would be going back with concrete, so we won't have that problem.
When y'all replace pipes, is it done by the age of the pipes? When you're determining how, which ones get, with the, with what we have in the budget of the six hundred thousand, how do you, how is that determined? Is it by time and age of the pipes?
A, a little bit of both, we, we go, we have the city broken up into sectors, and we inspect, uh, a sector a year, and what they do, that, you know, they go in with cameras, take pictures, and we assess how bad the pipes are, uh, from that, and then we can, we can rack and stack those projects for either replacement or pipelining or, 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 or that sort of thing. And that's, that's also been going on this year. But these, these were identified in those areas, but these have accelerated way more than, than what we'd hoped.
And you did look at pipelining there?
Yes, these would not be eligible for any kind of pipelining due to the, uh, the size of the holes and the separation and all that stuff. These have to be, uh, dug up and replaced the old-fashioned way.
Just to clarify, if that one's under a hundred thousand dollars, then the Public Works bidding law does not technically apply to it.
Correct.
You should, you should still document the emergency nature of why the work needs to be done.
All right, anything else?
Do we need to make a motion of any sort?
No, this wasn't on the agenda, so.
Okay.
All right, any other council, thank you, David. Any other council staff topics?
Yes. Kind of shuffle my notes here. Frank, do you have anything?
No, I'm fine. I'd like to personally just o- offer up to the council and, as well as the citizens, the reason that Councilman Holland is not here is that his wife's mother is in hospice care and is not expected to survive the night. And so I'd like to ask for everyone to keep their thoughts and prayers with Councilman Holland and his family in their, you know, difficult time. Um, the next thing I'd like to talk about is deer hunting. I'm very happy that we approved the ordinance tonight, that we actually changed it. I've monitored some social media in the last few weeks, and I encourage citizens to watch the DNR presentation that we had at our November seventh meeting, so that all citizens can completely understand what the DNR representative told us. Allowing deer to over browse our green belts and green spaces could result in long-range loss of trees in those areas, because the deer are eating the seedlings and saplings that are needed to replace mature trees when they die or are damaged by storms, et cetera. Additionally, social media sites are showing more and more photos of coyotes in the area. I don't know if anybody's seen those on there yet. Um, but they too may be hunted during extended archery season. And I encourage anybody who is having a coyote problem, and there are several on there, on Facebook, to check the GeorgiaWildlife.com website for details about hunting for them, because you can hunt for coyotes. Number three is, I'd like to bring up something else. I, we've talked about the Crab Apple Lane closure, we have a camera going in at the Crab, Crab Apple Lane gate. I've spoken with Clint about this, he and I were in agreement, he was gonna present it tonight, but he's not here. But, um, we're questioning whether or not we need any of the cameras at any of the other entries, points in and out of the city, except the Crab Apple Gate area. And so I'd like to bring that up and see if we can put it on a future agenda, because I really think we don't need to expend the money for the other cameras, um, when the real issue is just Crab Apple.
So. I think the reason, the rationale, no, go ahead, did, did you have something else?
No, I was gonna ask if anybody else agreed further.
I think, I think the rationale was that we would have counts at three different locations for basis for comparison. Uh, we might get numbers at the end of August and say, well, is that a lot? Is that a little? What does that compare to other locations in the city where golf carts might come in from the outside of the city limits? Um, I think there's also something to be said for, we made a good decision, it was well thought out, discussed for many months, it was unanimous, and if we were to move forward on it, we'll get some, we'll get some good data. I think we made a very good decision, and we were unanimous and made it together, and I'm ready to move forward and, and see how that pans out.
I don't think that the data from the other points of entry into the city are gonna be relevant against the Crab Apple data, because you have different schools, different paths, different residential neighborhoods, different numbers of citizens. Some of the paths are more well-established, I don't think any of the data really is gonna compare in any way, shape, or form. And I'm just thinking that we should just save the money and not have the cameras when we don't really need them in those areas.
My only comment, when I talked to Clint about this, was what is the cost? How much are we gonna be saving?
There goes Justin.
Total of all three is ten thousand. Uh, that includes the cameras, the monitoring, the counts, everything, so about thirty-three hundred, thirty-three hundred apiece, thirty-three, thirty-three, repeating.
Okay, but how long, how long is staff gonna have to, well, and of course, there's always the risk of camera theft.
But, um, how long are, yeah, I mean, we're looking at a long-range thing. Staff time is also valuable, too.
Well, this is-
Monitoring.
Yeah, so this is through our Flock system, if you're familiar with that, our Flock cameras that the PD uses. We just added three cameras to that contract, and these three are just for a year. It was a year contract, and they actually do, you know, they'll provide us with, they'll do the counts and everything.
Are there, are there better places we could put them, Justin?
So, no, like, not in my opinion. Uh, everybody, I mean, it's a subjective, uh, feeling on where you would put them, but the, the way the motion was written was two other locations as determined by staff. So myself and Chris and, uh, PD, Matt Myers, and, uh, uh, Brad, uh, Brad Williams met, and we determined the two at the locations. One is Maple Shade. Maple Shade to me is, is comparable, because it is the other, it's actually Tyrone, it's the other side of seventy-four, and it is a neighborhood road, like, you have to go through a neighborhood, uh, to get into Peachtree City from Tyrone there. So to me, that's very comparable. South side was a little tougher, uh, I would have liked to use Forest and Place on the south side because of all the school traffic that goes through there, because that would have been a lot. But maybe skewed, but also with the tunnel going in, that one's off the table. So what we used was the Preserve, because if you come through the Preserve, even though there's pass on that side of Redline, if you're coming from the county, you use those paths to get into the Preserve, but you actually have to drive through the Preserve neighborhood to connect into the rest of the pass system. So you're still, you have to drive on a neighborhood road, uh, to connect into the pass system. And so we put it on that neighborhood road there. So I think they're comparable, as, as far as going through a neighborhood road to get to our pass systems.
I think you made some wise decisions, Justin.
Thanks.
I just, I, I just-
But that's, it's up to you all.
Yeah, I, I disagree with that, that they're not, you know, I'd say that they're not needed on the other ones. Moving on then.
So if you did, if you eliminated two, you'd be saving about six thousand, six hundred dollars.
Councilmember Johnson, anything on that?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think for me, this is, this was, um, something that I personally debated for a very long time, and I think it's still an issue that we will continue to monitor. And I wanna, um, I would personally feel more comfortable making a future decision based on all of that combined data. I wanna know how golf carts are, I wanna know at other points, where golf carts are coming in, what those numbers are. With the other two, that would not be Crab Apple Lane, there isn't development going on there. So if we have numbers there for as long as we're just doing this study, I don't think we would need any future data. If we just get that data now, it gives us that baseline. So where we might be monitoring Crab Apple, personally, I would wanna see future monitoring of that, because there is development going on there. So I could see the other two points not being needed in fu- in anything future. Yeah, I would say do it as we're doing it now, and then if we need anything else, it would just be the Crab Apple Gate, 'cause we would have the baseline to compare.
I concur with you.
All right, anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Distaudio.
I was just gonna say, with all the e- emails we've gotten from everybody in that area, I would rather err on the higher side and have the data, and all of a sudden, we take cameras out. So I think it's better to do what we're doing. Thank you, Justin.
Well, we wouldn't be taking the camera out of Crab Apple, which was the problem. I, I have one other item. When the agenda for tonight was posted on Friday, there was a presentation listed for a program called Building Brains From the Beginning. I questioned the placement on the agenda. Councilman Holland and Distaudio emailed their agreement that it should be removed from the agenda, and it, the agenda was amended to remove it. Per ordinance twelve eighteen, section C, reads as follows. Agenda item request. City staff with approval from the city manager may request to have an item placed on the agenda by filling, filing such a request in writing with the city clerk prior to noon on the Thursday preceding the city council meeting. The mayor or any council member may introduce an item in accordance with section two dash thirty-six I. Under council staff topics, consensus must be reached in a public meeting by the mayor and council to determine if further investigation and research into the matter is warranted prior to bringing the item back for an official action at a subsequent meeting. Such items may not be placed or discussed on the agenda if council has already decided the issue within a hundred and eighty days. Unquote. Ordinance twelve eighteen was last amended on April fourth in a three-two vote by this council, with Councilman Holland and I voting no. On Tuesday, I asked city manager, Mr. Strickland, to provide me a copy of the written request from city staff to place the item on the agenda. The response I received showed that Mayor Lerner requested for the presentation to be placed on the agenda. It was never mentioned in the council staff topics on January second or in any prior meeting, per the ordinance. It appears- It appears that the ordinance has turned into a two-tiered system that has created anguish and dissension among this council because some of us can put items on the agenda by bypassing the council staff topic process and others don't. Thank you.
All right. It sounds like we have some questions about process. And I would suggest that we put this on our agenda for our retreat. I think it'd be a great topic that we could all get into.
Fair enough.
That'll work. All right, any other council staff topics?
Well, as it is, I think that this presentation was a good one. And I would love to see it come forward. So if the process is that, I mean, regardless of how it was put on and how it was taken off, I think that topic is a good thing to be discussed at the retreat. But looking at what this actual presentation is about, this is coming, as far as I know, is coming from the Board of Education.
No, it's not.
Can, is there any clarification that we can get?
I haven't seen the presentation because I wanted to see it alongside my colleagues on council. It's presented by Dr. Julie Turner, I think, who is retired from our Fayette County Public Education System. I can tell you that I sit on the Department of Public Health Board. The ex-officio, officer of the mayor, sits on the Department of Public Health Board alongside some other community leaders, including Dr. Patterson, our school superintendent. And there are deep concerns in our public school system, in all the school systems right now, about what's happening with five-year-olds that are coming into kindergartens across the board, Georgia, the country, unprepared to learn. And these were COVID babies. They've been in isolation. Another factor is working parents right now. And we talked about this in our Department of Public Health meeting. And all the way out to the car, working parents now are struggling mightily just to pay the bills. And sometimes when they get home in the evening, they hand the kid an iPad just so they can put dinner on the table and get through the evening. And so what they're seeing, what he's seeing in our school system is kids, five-year-olds coming into our school systems that are not potty trained, that don't know how to read or hold a book, that know how to swipe on an iPad but don't know how to hold a pencil because you hold your arm differently and your elbow goes in a different place. There are really concerning details right now. And a program that involves sharing information about what's going on and what we can do to intervene, for example, three-year-olds, two-year-olds who might have markers for autism, babies who are lower birth weight. We have a Department of Public Health. We have an engaged school system. We have engaged parents. And so the whole point involves a community that comes together to support these families, to support youngsters. And so I think it's definitely worth hearing. But I think we should talk about it more at our retreat and it's a valuable conversation to have.
Yes, just to be clear, we weren't, Clint and I were not objecting to the subject. It's a valuable resource that we ought to listen to. It was how we got it on the council that was irritating.
That's fair, yeah, yeah.
We're going to take that up to the retreat.
Absolutely.
Well, for anybody who wants to actually see the presentation, all you have to do is go to the Fayette County Board of Education website and watch the video that they had for their workshop meeting on September 9th of 2024. The entire presentation is on there.
September 9th, 2024?
Yep, I have the link for it, but obviously I can't read it to you because it's a little too complicated.
Any other, any other council staff topics?
I can't, I can't sit here and have our council say no to a presentation that helps children and families. I ran for children and families.
Well, I'm all for it. That's two of us. You want to see this presentation, Mr. Distadio?
Yes, but I want to do it after we decide how we're going to do it.
Actually, if the three of us in council staff topics now determine that we want it on an agenda, that's how it moves forward.
That would be in accordance, there wouldn't be a question.
And the issue is, you should have done it that way in the first place.
Fair. Also, there are more corollary issues. And one is that the city manager has leeway and judgment. And it is the city manager who can put anything on the agenda that he wants.
I think that's a matter of interpretation of the ordinance.
Well, we will absolutely cover this in our, this process in our council retreat. But if you want to talk about the content of the actual presentation, are you ready to say yes to hear this presentation in a future council meeting? If the three of us?
In a future council meeting, yes.
Okay. That's three. Any other council staff topics?
I did have a positive thing I wanted to share. And I feel like we were remiss in December for not recognizing our recreation department for the great job that they did on our hometown holidays. So this is coming a little late, but we have Harold Layton here, who I know did a lot of work for our hometown holidays and it was a great success. So I wanted to just thank them.
Let's hear it. All right, do we have executive session?
Yes, we do. We need to discuss real estate in executive session.
All right, can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we move to executive session for the purposes of discussing real estate.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We are in the executive.